Get close to your three-minute mark, it will turn yellow like a traffic light does, and then it will turn red when your time is run out. And Secretary Mark Neal will...
Okay, I found this on the web.
Has found that on the web.
Sorry, Mr. President.
Mark, that's one. When you get to three, that's it. You're done.
And the third thing that we're changing this evening, and this is the one I'm most excited about. Previously, when our students would come here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, they would come in front of the room, and they would say the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would thank them and give them a recognition certificate such as this, and then they would go out in the hallway and have their picture taken in front of what is just an innocuous brown wall that 20 years from now really wouldn't mean anything to them. So, we've decided to change that up a little bit. Instead of that, since the students are the whole reason that we're all here, we would like the students to come up here and have the entire Board of Education in the picture, have the students in the picture, have their parents in the picture, have their teacher and their principal in the picture. That's, after all, what it's all about. So, there might be a little bit of confusion while we try to get this all worked out, but if you'll bear with us, we'll start the meeting. And, let's see here. I'm supposed to read something else, right? See, it's working alright. Our students are from Schweitzer Elementary School. They're gonna lead us in the pledge with Aleah Nofsinger, Hannah Nofsinger, and Madalene Sartor. I hope I've said that properly. Please come forward and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think I should go down there and give them this and lead them up.
So, Mark Neal reads the bio.
You got the bios?
Mm-hmm.
Just a moment.
Stay right down, hold it down.
Where do I have the bios?
Are they in my folder?
They should be in Mark's. Right there in your folder.
This is the patience part I was talking about.
Alright, what's the minutes? Check it out. That's it. There you go.
It should come back here.
Not in the minutes.
There it is, right there. Is that it? No.
Nope.
It should be highlighted. Yeah. It's from the council. That's it, in his folder.
We're still looking, just a moment. Let's see your bios.
Aleah? On behalf of the Board of Education, we would like to welcome you and thank you for helping us in the pledge. This award says, "In recognition presented to Aleah Nofsinger for participation in the flag ceremony during a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wayne Westland Community Schools." Thank you very much. And this award of recognition for Hannah Nofsinger for participation in the flag ceremony during a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wayne Westland Community Schools. And thank you. And will you help me pronounce your name so I pronounce it properly? Madalene Sartor for participation in the flag ceremony during a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wayne Westland Community Schools. And that was a really great whisper. You're gonna do great in the entertainment industry. So, thank you. Have we found their bio?
No, Mr. President. I don't seem to have the bio here.
Well, can we begin with you, Mittman?
No, here it is. You just use it on my computer.
Okay. These things sometimes happen. Thank you.
It's right here. It might be a little small, but off through up to my right hand.
Okay, very good. Okay, Aleah? Who's Aleah? Alright. Aleah is a fourth-grade student at Schweitzer. She is Mrs. Barber's class and loves learning about history and math. Aleah is a positive leader and a role model for her classmates and younger students at Schweitzer. She is currently a kindergarten safety, and she gets the lunch cards organized every morning and washes the classroom tables. Very good. Madalene, which one is Madalene? Madalene. Madalene Sartor is a third-grade student in Mrs. Madison's class. She loves her teacher because she is so nice and always helps her learn. Madalene likes reading with her first-grade buddy and helping her to read new words. Also, Madalene likes Schweitzer, that Schweitzer is a leader in ME school because she thinks it helps everyone get along. Madalene is a positive role model and leader at Schweitzer every day. And Hannah?
Hannah's right here.
Oh, can't see her. Couldn't see a third one.
Hannah Nofsinger is a kindergartner.
She's a kindergarten student in Mrs. Bylow's class and is Aleah's younger sister. She loves playing with other students at recess, especially when they build with Magna tiles. Hannah is a great leader at Schweitzer. She's a good friend to others and always follows our PBIS expectations of being safe, responsible, and respectful.
Madalene, can you tell me who you brought with you this evening?
Uh, I brought my dad and my mom.
And did you also bring a principal or a teacher with you tonight?
Yeah, Miss Ray.
Hello. Can y'all come up here just a moment? We're gonna get a picture of everybody. And Aleah and Hannah, who did you bring this evening? Your sister? And your mom?
My older sister.
And what about your principal? Come on up. Anyone come on up and thank you? Thank you. Thank you, sir. We're gonna get a picture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Pamela Scrims.
One more person.
We got one more?
They're sisters.
Oh, they're sisters? Okay.
You need us to get up and walk over? Yeah, I can. Come on.
The kids that led us in the pledge, you're gonna sit here in the seats that you will one day occupy.
Come on around. Yes?
Have a seat.
Why don't you follow with your own feet? And that way the people that come behind you don't have to fly over you.
There you go.
That's the best seat in the world.
Awesome. There you go.
Pull your words up so everyone can see them. Like, add it to your face though. Very good.
There you go.
Thank you.
Wanna make sure I can see? I'm using the little one.
Can she get, get on the seat?
She can stand on the seat.
Alright, everybody look at me. We're gonna take a couple, alright?
Don't hide your face, sweetheart. Aren't we supposed to say cheese?
I'm gonna, I would take, I always take a couple first. Alright, ready? One, two, three, say cheese.
Cheese!
One more. One, two, three, cheese.
Cheese!
Alright, good job, everybody.
Okay. Thanks again.
Too precious.
Thank you very much. And although, you're welcome to stay for every meeting, everyone is. If you have other things, we understand. You won't offend us, but we're so glad that you came, and thanks for coming up and having your picture taken. It's very important for us, and the reason we're here is you. So, thank you. Mr. Secretary?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda.
The roll call attendance.
Call the roll.
Mr. Buckeloo.
Present.
Dr. Weaver.
Present.
Mrs. Hines.
Present.
Myself, present. Ms. Madell.
I'm here.
Mr. Walker, Mrs. Walker, rather.
Present.
Mr. Walker is two.
Mr. Walker is two.
And President Cox.
Present.
Next item on the agenda, 231.18, is recognitions presentations. Dr. Holt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our first presentation is from Mrs. Maria Mitter, who is part of our Employee, Community, and Governmental Relations Department, and she is bringing with her Mrs. Cassie Nichols for our Champions Before and After School Program. Ladies.
Thank you, Dr. Holt. Good evening, President Cox and board members. I just wanted to take an opportunity for, to share some of the great and exciting things that Champions Before and After School Program are doing and offering to our families. They've been a wonderful partner of the district for quite some time, and over the past year, Ms. Nichols and I have worked really hard to offer some additional incentives for our families and also some other ways that our families can access their services. They are the only before and after-school provider for all of our families before and after, where Bright Futures is only after-school for a small number of students. So, I wanted to give Ms. Nichols this opportunity to share with you what they're offering and how families can access their services.
So, Ms. Nichols.
Thank you so much, Maria. I very much appreciate it, and thank you all for having us and inviting me to be here this evening. So, I, late in the game, got this to everyone today. They were at my office last week. But I did, it's not something that we have to finger through each page and speak about right now. I did just wanna be able to provide you with some basic information about what we do send to our families, and a few of the things that I wanted to focus on first and foremost was, like Ms. Mitter was mentioning there, how we've partnered together primarily more and more over this past year, and really focusing on the needs of the families and making sure that we get more kids away from home and with us in a safe and fun and exciting environment, but one that they can also afford, because we are a-for-profit and we do charge a tuition. But that being said, we've always allowed our families to have scholarships. We've worked very closely with your principals and secretaries and administrative staff to be able to offer those scholarships for the families. Scholarships can include everything from 100% off for homeless families to 50% off, 25% off, but we also work with the state of Michigan through DHHS, Child Care Assistance. And one of the things that we've just put in place, and I'm super proud to announce, in that we are finishing up all of our schools as of March 15th this year, so just five short weeks away, all of our schools will have gone through the Great Start Accreditation Process. So far, we have seven of them completed. It is a five-star rating at the highest, and we have come in at five of seven schools so far at a five-star rating. Today actually was the second observation period, and we came in at a five-star again. So, I'm so proud of that, and what that does for our families here in Wayne Westland is that offers our families who have childcare needs and childcare assistance free childcare. So, we are officially free for before and after-school care for our families that receive childcare assistance. And that was a lot of hard work on behalf of both of us, as well as our staff. So, I just wanted to include that here at the beginning to show you our qualifications of how we came through that and the accreditation processes. Just a fun picture about the kids having fun at one of our programs. We offer, we're here almost 365 days a year. I mean, we're here often. I mean, we're here on half-days, full-days off, mid-winter breaks, all of our breaks, snow-days, we're over at Marshall. So, we are here for the families when they need us. If there is anything that we can do better, we always chat about that to try to improve the program for the children. They are the reason that we are all sitting here today. I've worked with them for 21 years, and I absolutely adore what we do. So, I would love to open up the floor for any questions that any of you may have about the services that we provide for your families, or in general about anything.
Thank you. Members of the board?
I have, I have a, not a question, but just a statement, and I wanna thank you and your staff for braving the elements to come in and provide an opportunity. Schools close, but workplaces don't always close, and now you have to worry about childcare for that day. And I know our superintendent's been pretty good about giving enough advanced warning, but that's not always the case. So, I wanna thank you and your staff for, you know, sometimes it's a little treacherous, but I wanna thank you for coming in.
I appreciate that an awful lot. My team is, they're pretty amazing. They come on in and there's no complaints. I buy them breakfast, though. And then lunch. And coffee.
Yeah, our theory is if you feed them, they will come.
Exactly. Thank you, though.
Other members of the Board of Education have comments?
I just had one thing. I really like that you guys work with the Department of Human Services, 'cause a lot of the complaints are, is that people can't afford the daycare. Now, what about the field trips? How does that work if the family's a little bit low-income with the field trip?
Absolutely. So, a part of what I like about the way that our system works is that we actually, we charge an activity fee. The state of Michigan now pays that, though, up to $75 per year. So, the state of Michigan will help to make those payments. It is a one-time fee. It does go towards all of the field trips that we go on for a summer camp. Outside of that, it's just regular weekly tuition, and it will fall into that same category as up to free for the families, because at max, at max, they'll pay for nine hours a day, and then that nine hours a day would equate to what our tuition would be. Eight to nine hours a day, they'll be, if they're there eight hours, it would be an extremely small co-pay that they would be responsible for. So, it's just that small fee at the beginning. If a family truly is homeless or in just dire need, we've allowed, you know, maybe five to 10 families not even to pay that as well. So, I just say, let them come to me, ask the questions. Many of the principals will work with me and also have those conversations. Cassie, we have a family that's in dire need. Can you please work with them? I don't think I've ever said no. So, thank you for that. You're welcome.
Other members of the board have comments or questions? Thank you very much for your time here tonight. We appreciate all that you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
So, as the second group begins to come up, I wanna preface this a little bit with, on the tables out in front, you received a copy of the district-level systemic involvement matrix. This is a product of the hard work of the central office team to really think through the comments from last year's fuelings report that we did regarding having people involved in decision-making. Part of the challenge when I came here was that my people, and I consider everyone my people, between, it was my teachers, whether it was my bus drivers, whether it was my parents and my families, there seemed to be some ambiguity as to how decisions were being made within the district and how we were going about making these very high-level impactful decisions for our community. So, this district-level involvement matrix, it was created toward the latter part of last year by our executive cabinet team to really talk about the different levels of involvement that anyone in our community can have. What you are about to experience is one of our committees. It falls under being a district action, I'm sorry, a collective efficacy action team, and this is a specific one surrounding secondary redesign. So, we put a call out to our folks in our district and said, hey, if you're interested in what's going to happen with our secondary redesign after we obviously pass the bond, please join us and become involved. And so, what you are going to experience now is a presentation from that secondary redesign team on what it is that they have decided so far, and we'll have a presentation each month between now and April when the team is tasked with coming back with a decision on how we will redesign our secondary schools. And so, with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Townsell.
Thank you, Dr. Holt. Before I dive into this brief overview presentation, each team break up, I want you to have an opportunity to see the full range of stakeholders we have on this team. So, what I'm going to do is pass this mic, starting at the end, and we're gonna loop it around just so we know the capacity at which people serve on this team. We'll start at the end. So, state your name, position, and team.
Richard Jarvis, Family Resource Center Specialist.
I'm Annie Phillips. I'm at Stevenson Middle School, and I am co-chair on the observation team.
I'm David Mason. I'm at Franklin, and I'm on the observation team.
I'm gonna just step over and bring our mic way over here so we don't miss Cheryl.
Cheryl Neal. I'm with, at John Glenn High School. I'm on the modeling team.
And we have a special guest in the room, so, who is definitely a part of this incredible work we're doing, so I'm also gonna let her introduce herself as well.
Thank you.
I'm Sarah Easter with Communications by Design. We are technology consultants.
I'm Sherry Grove, Executive Director and Co-lead for our secondary redesign team.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Gidley. I work at John Glenn. I'm in the English Language Arts Department, and I'm one of the co-chairs for the model team.
Hello, I'm Heather Nimmergoth. I am an English teacher at John Glenn High School, and I also run the school store with the kids, and I'm a co-chair on the model team with Kevin Gidley.
Hello, I'm Vonda Newborn. I work at Tinkham Educational Center. I am a PARA pro there, 31A PARA, and I am on the data team. I am part of the team.
Good evening. I'm Jaquita Grady, math teacher from John Glenn High School. I'm part of the data team.
I'm Sandra Gadbout. I'm part of the observation team, and I'm a community volunteer.
Hello, I'm Amanda Laidlaw. I teach science at Wayne Memorial High School this year, and I'm co-chair of data.
Dana Dalzo. I teach math at Tinkham and co-chair of data.
Siobhan Johnson, Executive Director, and I'm a part of the data team.
And just for the record, this is a third of the secondary redesign team. We have nearly 40 educators that serve on that team and that's helping, supporting, and leading this work. So, the goal of this secondary redesign team, literally, we have an opportunity to revolutionize the secondary experience for all of our kids here in Wayne Westland Community School District. And the goal is to design a portrait of a graduate. What does a graduate of Wayne Westland Community School District look like? We've identified some tasks of this team. The first and foremost is to visit schools and look at different models of educational programs that exist out there, a part of secondary redesign. Second, looking at data, gathering data, taking a keen look at disproportionalities, different subgroups, African-American, also looking at our special education population in addition to young people that come from economically disadvantaged communities, and finding a way to redesign the educational experience to ensure that not only we're closing those achievement gaps, but we're doing our part in being top 10 in the next 10 years in the state of Michigan. Also, we have an opportunity to survey all of the community, all of the stakeholders within the Wayne Westland School District community, not only through a Google Doc survey, but also through a thought exchange application, and you'll see that at the end of this presentation. We're in small-group discussion that we analyze and observe and travel across the state of Michigan, even abroad, to see some of the best practices and innovation in secondary redesign. Now, the process, December 2018, we went live. We put out an application to all stakeholders in the Wayne Westland community and asked them to join the secondary redesign team. We have individuals from parents, all the way up to principals, even assistant superintendents that sit on this team, and we have this team divided into three groups. We have co-chairs that lead the work and is generally led by the educators that serve in our buildings. The three teams are the observation team, the data team, and the model team. The observation team, obviously, visit schools, visit districts. Model team have an opportunity to research, look at programs that are working with light communities as ours, and see how they're executing. And last, our data team, looking at the demographics to ensure that the rest of our life is the best of our life, truthfully. Deliverables. We're looking to design the portrait of a graduate here in Wayne Westland, also doing an inventory of future college and career pathways and putting together a secondary redesign proposal for the April board meeting. The timeline to date, so far, we, after we put out the application in December of 2018, we kicked off the meeting January 10th, a full-day meeting with co-chairs and a committee as a whole. In addition to that, we've identified initial working meetings, so every, we had two full days, January 17th and January 19th. I know we had a snow day in between there, but we did have an opportunity to make that up. But each team meets weekly on Tuesday for a two-hour time period, whichever works best for that team. And right now, we're gonna transition to each of the teams, data team, observation team, and model team, so you can see the work that has been done thus far. And if you have a laptop or a phone, there is still a thought exchange app where you can see some of the questions that we ask our community to identify. What do you wanna see in a portrait of a graduate? What does a Wayne Westland graduate look like to you? And you can still log in. If you put that URL in on your phone or your laptop and put that nine-digit code in, you have an opportunity to see the questions and the results. Without further ado, we'll jump into, why don't we start with the data team?
Good evening, everyone, again. Again, I'm Jaquita Grady. Let's see. So, for our team, we focused on three different aspects. So, we focused on the current data that we have, ninth-grade academy, and the possible models and pathways that we would use, and what data or information do we still need from all of our stakeholders that are part of the process. So, from the portrait of a graduate survey, as Dr. Townsell stated, we use two different... Alright, so we use two different survey types. We use a Google Doc, and then we also use something in Thought Exchange. So, we've had a pretty good representative sample from all of the stakeholders from our community. We had our teachers, our parents, our students, our administration team, support staff, and just members from the community that participated in that survey and gave their feedback. From that, from both surveys, it was pretty much, the information that we received was the same, so we needed... They said the top five choices or community. Conflict resolution and critical thinking. Those were the top five from both of the surveys that we put out. So, based off of that information, we decided to focus on two areas. The first, we decided to focus on the ninth-grade academy. Now, the reason that we did that is because when we pulled data for the five-year trend data from both Wayne Memorial and John Glenn High School, we saw, and we realized that there was a disproportionate amount of ninth graders that are retained versus the 10th and 11th grade students. For both high schools, John Glenn and for Wayne Memorial. So, we decided to focus on a ninth-grade academy. There are tons of advantages to focusing on a ninth-grade academy. First, ah, let me slow down, is the small learning communities, the readiness for a college and career, the personalized learning community, the faculty or staff that's strictly focused on the ninth-grade students. The students can start, end the ninth grade, we would like for them to begin the process of focusing on career pathways at that point. We would like for them to be introduced to that as early as seventh or eighth grade in the middle school, so they could kinda explore different careers, but have a clear focus once they hit high school in ninth grade. There were some disadvantages. So, as we looked for different models around the country and within the state that actually have ninth-grade academies, we noticed that it wasn't a lot of, it was, it was just anecdotal data that was there. It was not a lot of metrics and measures. Everyone said, well, our program is a success, but what do you have to prove that? So, those are some of the disadvantages that we have. So, we realized that if this is something that we implement in our district, we would have to track the data from eighth grade to ninth grade, and some of that data would be test scores, attendance, attendant suspensions, expulsions, different things like that to see the success of that particular program. So, we focused on four types of career pathways in education, which was the competency pathways, credential pathways, career pathways, and content pathways. credential pathways, career pathways, and content pathways. I won't touch a lot on all of those because the other two teams that are gonna present, they'll really focus on those things. This is an, oh, sorry, this here is an example of a pathway map, so if you notice, they start in high school, they can go to a trade school for LPN or a one-year program for that, go on to a two-year college for an RIN program, or go and say, I'm just gonna go to a four-year university and pursue a BSN. So there's different pathways in the field of nursing to do that. And one of the great things that we have here in Wayne Westland is our Career Tech, where they can actually begin that process here through the certified notes and assistant program that we have here. And in each one of the pathway components, those are the four components of each area there, which is competency, content, a credential, and a career opportunity. So each one of the pathways that we presented before will result in all of those things that are there, and ultimately with a career in that field. What do we need? So we just discussed this, that we would need to track this system from eighth to ninth grade and really have a team dedicated to tracking that and analyzing the data and realizing the effectiveness of that program. So the things that we're still looking for, sort of our last meeting, one of the things that we did, alright, there we go, what are we still looking for? We realized that we were missing some information from our parents, our students, and from our teachers in the district, that some of the information that they did not have a voice, so we've created two additional surveys, they have not gone out yet, when are they going out? Okay, so they're gonna go out this week, you all will be able to get them and see them.
It's a survey for students only and we want all sixth through twelfth graders to participate, and then there's a separate survey, because there's always a different perspective whether you're a student or parent, there's a separate survey for parents, staff, and community members.
Okay, and we decided to include the sixth through seventh grade in that process as well, because we realized that when we implement this program, those would be the students that will enter into this, so it was vital, we were missing that before, I believe we only started with or just tapped into ninth or twelfth grade, and we realized that we needed to tap that particular group of students as well. Thank you, any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you so much, right now, we're gonna ask our model team to come up.
No, I didn't, did you log in, is it good? Okay.
Oh, awesome, okay, so we approached this, good evening, my name's Kevin Gidley, co-chair of model team.
And I'm Heather Nimmergoth, co-chair of model team.
Thank you, we approached this from the aspect, because we're presenting to our committee as a whole, what do we know so far in terms of the models that are available? And we broke it down into a couple of, three different things, but first of all, when we were charged with this task, Dr. Holt walked into the room and says, I want you to dream big, and then I want you to dream bigger, and Heather and I, as well as our team, and hopefully the remainder of the team have embraced that idea, and we're not letting past ideas, not that we have all kinds of money, but we're just going to approach this for what's best for kids, and we are gonna find out the best programs that are available and, and see what we can find and move on from there.
And just not kids, Wayne Westland kids, to be specific.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we were tasked with the following two, and we divided it up into three different areas, career and soft skill trends, programs and models, and to look at what partnerships we have and what partnerships we can gain as we go through the process. We looked at some career pathways, employment trends, skill trends that are desired, and what our community seems to want, as we look through the portrait of a graduate data. As we went through, we figured out that there's a whole list of employment ideas that are desirable throughout the state of Michigan, a lot of them focus around health, technology, and like categories, and what I said was, you know, our generation, my generation is larger than the baby boomers, and this, this, this medical idea, this, these career pathways in the medical field, they're not going anywhere, so that field alone is one path that is huge and can be capitalized onto a great deal. We looked at some soft skills, soft skills are the non-cognitive, communication-oriented skills that we need to... Instill, yep, in, in, in our, in our students as they go out into the workforce. We looked at LinkedIn and Monster.com, two major employment companies, and there's a list there, but leadership, communication, teamwork, time management, problem solving, getting creative, these are all skills that, conflict resolution and taking some criticism as well, are skills that some of our young people need as they progress into the work world. We went and looked at what Wayne Westland wants, this comes out of the portrait of the graduate data, and you can read the list, but it's creativity and innovation, some collaboration, a lot of communication-oriented ideas, again, critical thinking, problem solving, empathy, and taking responsibility for your actions and some of that criticism that you might experience as you go through the work world. So then we started looking at different programs and models, what's a program, what's a model, what's a model, what's a program, it's, there's this fine line in between, sometimes a program has models in it and sometimes a model is comprised of many different programs. Imagination is better than knowledge, is a quote that we, we kinda embrace as we went through this, and that's what we're, we're trying to imagine a whole new graduate in Wayne Westland.
Or a whole new model or program in Wayne Westland.
Yes. I'm gonna let you do this one, since you like that.
Kevin laughed at me when I sent this to him, he's like, why did you put models on there? The reason I put models on there is because we are the model team, but also because every model has a different fashion, and I kind of liken that to a school district too. We're all different across the board, even though we're all in the state of Michigan, and we need to find the fashion or the right fit for Wayne Westland. And that may be some, one of the programs or models that is our, that is already established by other schools, that other school districts are using it, using currently, but we also may be able to create our own and pull different bits and pieces from all these different programs and create our own Wayne Westland model and put ourselves on the map through this program. So that's also, also an option. Currently, we have our team looking at each of these a little bit closer to get some more characteristics about each of them and see if they will fit into Wayne Westland model, and then hopefully at the next presentation, we'll be able to narrow it down to, you know, five at least with the other two teams, so that we can start to shrink the different types of programs and models that we think will be a fashionable fit for Wayne Westland students.
Some of the districts, excuse me, around us that are doing bits and pieces of redesign and taking some of the programs that are out there, for example, there's some early college programs in Dearborn-Romulus and Ann Arbor, Wall-to-Wall Academies in Taylor, IB or International Baccalaureate in surrounding school districts, Blended Learning, Stem and Steam in Farmington, and they're taking bits and pieces and creating smaller academies, and we're not gonna have one model that's gonna be all Wayne Westland. There's different pieces and parts that are gonna have to be appropriately identified for different groups, different locations, the who, what, how, where, and when of this whole thing is, we're taking that list of eleven, like Heather said, and narrowing that down, that's our next endeavor, is to bring that down to about five or so and see what's best for us.
Kevin's also said in the past presentations that we may start off in one of these models and then change to another model along the way as we grow, so we're not tied to just one model, we may eventually, you know, move into IB from Wall-to-Wall Academies.
Next, we look at partnerships, what we currently have, and before I get into what those partnerships are, Dr. Townsend in the meeting said, I want students to have a menu of options at graduation. I'm here and I wanna go here, here, and here, and how do I get there? I'm gonna look at this menu and figure out how we're, what are my steps in order to get there? And career pathways, sounds like it's a lot of skilled trades idea, but as the data team kinda pointed out, medical, for example, you could take something at Career Tech and go right into that field, or you could take the next step and go to community college and go that step, and then you go even further and get a deeper education and take that into a highly educated position, like, or a university, in terms of that kind of position that comes out of that education. Current partnership, thanks to the Career Tech Principal and all of her knowledge in this, City Westland Cafe Marquette, and we have everything from the Champions Program, Upward Bound School, Craft College, Futures, and that's, that's a pretty extensive list. It's not everything, but it's a pretty good list that we are aware of at this time. Next, these are potential partnerships we'd like to throw out there and maybe pursue with Ford.
I think Ford North Brothers is one, is that our drive, yeah, I saw that, so we can cross that one off.
Yes, I saw that. Hospital systems, other educational systems, public safety, county level, Quicken Loans is huge in our community and just massive corporation that has lots of opportunities and other work-based learning opportunities. What do we still need to know? Well, we need to blend what we know with data and observation to narrow that list down and figure out what's going, what appears at this point to be the best topics to explore more deeply. And as we move forward, we're not sure if this is Dr. Townsend or Kanye West, but he said students should reach for the sky, or touch the sky. I mean, that's, that's the idea that we'd like them all to, as they go through our educational system, is that they can reach the sky, they can do whatever they want, and move forward and just be that shiny example of what it is to be a public education product. And that's all our team members there at the bottom, and I've opened it up to any questions you may have at this point.
Members of the Board of Education, questions, comments? Mr. Buckeloo?
With respect to, to your part of the presentation, I noticed that there were a number of job opportunities related to the health field, and I could see how they were very, very applicable to old people, and I found that very reassuring.
Well, that's good, we got you covered.
Oh, yeah, I needed to. The other thing is, in my experience, as, as an educator, we've always tried to focus on that four-year education for our students, that's success, and that is the case today. We're looking at something much broader, we're looking at jobs that require a two-year degree, an associate's degree, no degree, but just simply technical training, and that seems to fit better, our mission as educators, than anything that we did in the past, and I would like to say that you folks are right on target with the, with what you're doing, at least as I see the problem, so thank you very much.
We went to a meeting at the Wayne County recently, they had some type of program too that I would wonder if you guys could work together with the, the skilled trades, remember they had a program with the counselors and the different programs and options for the children as well? Cause I know, like, I meet a lot of odd people, like I met some people that work at NOAA, like those are really odd jobs, like the scientists that people don't really know about, and aviation, they have a program that we can connect with where they have the kids fly in different programs, so this is really a great opportunity, because like, Mr. Buckeloo said before, the kids, it's not always about having a lot of student debt, cause you know, like, I'm the generation where I was told to go to school, now I have like seventy thousand in student debt and really don't have a lot to show for, so this is a really nice way to have the kids, you know, come out without having a lot of debt and having really good skills.
Thank you, Melody. Anyone else? Thank you for your presentation, and thank you for your work.
Last, last group we're bringing up is our observation team, and then we'll close off with final questions.
Hello, I'm Annie Phillips, I'm the co-chair on the, on the observation team, sorry, I got distracted.
I'm Bridgette Darvis, the co-chair on the observation team as well.
So we have a video to show you of some of the stuff, part of our task is to, based on the work of the model team and the ops, or the data team, is to find those schools that match some of the things we're looking for and set up visits to go see them. So, at the time that we made this video, we hadn't visited any schools yet, but we did visit one since then and that information will be in there, Bridgette will speak to that in the video.
And I just wanna say, please listen carefully, because the volume is not as loud as we'd like, so please try to listen keenly.
My dream school would probably have like more experiment learning, field trips, and common spaces, just in case you don't wanna like be sitting in class all day, somewhere you can still work but be on task. Yeah, school activities, after-school activities, some make it more live.
My dream school would have great heat and it would have a new auditorium.
So I went to Hillel with the team, and you might be thinking, why would we go to a private Jewish day school in Bloomfield Hills, but it was so wonderful to go, they had such great things that we could take and bring back here and use in our schools that we would never have seen elsewhere, they were very giving with their information, and they had a lot of really great ideas that they did, and they said, you don't have twenty million dollars to spend, but you can take these ideas and they don't cost you a thing, like open, flexible seating, you know, and you mentioned that young man, the first one that spoke said, he wants somewhere that's like a flexible learning space, that he's not in a class, but he's still being observed, that was all what that school was about. When we walked in, there was a fireplace, I don't think we'll probably have that, but they were so accommodating. Never mind, fireplace is for everyone, but they were, it was a wonderful experience to go there and see that, because they were so far into the process that I was like, wow, these are things that we can bring back to Wayne Westland that aren't gonna cost an arm and a leg, but they're conceptual and they're things we can use. That's all open learning space that they have, and so the kids can leave class when the teacher's done, no teachers have their own classroom, teachers don't have desks in classrooms, they have like a shared workspace, and they, all the classes are movable, all the doors are removable, they're all white board doors and a Lego room, they had a maker's market, which was amazing for exploration and invention, I mean, it was really, they had a greenhouse, and it was, it was quite something to see. All their tables were movable too, they moved up, they moved down, their flooring was all clean, like you could do anything on it, you could clean it really well, they just really had it going on.
Like dorm rooms for like when you need to live somewhere, and like you're homeless or you're like, stuff like that, and like a daycare, because people have kids, just because like you're not as old as preferred, preferred, you still have kids and stuff like that.
My ideal high school would be high technology and better sport facilities.
Kent Innovation High School is one that we were scheduled to go to on February seventh, and that was a snow day, so we did not go, they also had a snow day at South Grand Rapids. But similar to Hillel Day School, they have some open learning areas, they're, they focus on project-based learning. And matching, instead, taking those traditional subjects and infusing them with things that are of high interest to the students, and to make that learning a little bit more engaging.
Have brand-new sports equipment and new gyms.
The ideal school for me would be a school with more classes for students, especially for, for them to choose the career that they want to go, or like do in their life. Also, it would be to have like teachers for everything and not like have so many subs or like so many online classes.
Bloomfield Hills, scheduled for tomorrow, they have an international baccalaureate program that extends K-12, they also have ninth and tenth grade learning communities and a model center where you can begin to earn college credit.
For academic-wise, we need teachers that can teach every single subject that a student could request, okay? This student needs fields that they wanna go to for college, and a school should be able to provide that. For sports, it's pretty simple with equipment and things that they can use in their sport.
In my opinion, an ideal school would be more considering on students' learning, not the grades that they earn, because the grades that some students are earning can be from cheating Because the grades that some students are earning can be from cheating and other stuff.
So Belleville, we have a team going on the 25th. That's the same day we're actually going to go to Centerline High School. So we're trying to divide and conquer and see as many schools that are matching us demographically, as well as having a high success rate with their graduation and kind of match our community. So that's really what we're looking for around here.
Centerline has some of the things that both teams talked about, like wall-to-wall academies. They focus on project-based learning, shadowing and internship opportunities for students, as well as a freshman academy. So that Centerline is a place that kind of has all of the aspects. And we look forward to going there as well.
Think we should have classes to help find our course for the future.
I think that just our 11th and 12th graders would benefit if we had a career pathways class. The class would help us decide ourselves what we want to do with our lives, instead of us being, I don't know, anxious about what we're going to do in college. That's what I think an ideal school would have.
Meridian High School is an early college high school that is in Sanford. So it's actually, you can attend for five years and you earn your associate's degree. I think we all really embrace the idea of dreaming big and dreaming bigger, so thank you.
Thank you. This concludes the presentation from our Secondary Redesign Team. Thank you so much. Questions?
Any members of the board have questions? Those presenters? I'd like to know, how many people are on the Observation Team?
Twelve are on the Observation Team as of right now.
So you all go to these schools?
No.
Not at all, sir. We try to break it up, like, try to have three or four on the team to go.
Yeah, just depending on how many people can, are available to go that day.
The teachers need subs. Annie and I have a lot of flexibility in our schedule, which we're really happy about, but a lot of people, we need to schedule subs and do all those sorts of things. So it takes more.
Right now, the Observation Team, I think, identified 27 or 28 schools, and we're in the process of scheduling right now. So we have about four trips already encumbered that we're going on to.
Thank you. No questions? Thank you very much. Thank you for your work.
Any final questions for Secondary Redesign?
Well, I guess I'm interested in knowing, you said both here and abroad. What are we looking at moving forward in terms of? We started this in December of last year. And here we are in February, and we've got 27 Michigan schools to go to. And we've gone to, what, less than a third of that?
Yeah, so the way we prioritize out of the 27 schools identified, I think we call just more than half of them. Some of them are able to accommodate, some of them are not. And the schools that we're potentially going to travel to that are outside of the state of Michigan is that they're at the bottom of the priority list. We want to exhaust Michigan first before we branch out into potentially regional schools.
Dr. Townsend, how did you choose the school districts? The 27 school districts?
All of our teams have the opportunity to look at demographics, like schools, programs that we're interested in. For example, International Baccalaureate, there's one school close to us that has that program, and that's a Levonia. Is that Levonia Churchill, I believe, that has the IB school? Salem and Plymouth Canton, Levonia Churchill, and then is it Bloomfield that also has it? And that's it. And there's a number, there's, you know, dozens of high schools in this area where that's an opportunity to potentially attract some of our higher-performing academic young people.
Thank you, Dr. Townsend. Mr. Buckaloo?
Dr. Townsend, have you been able to acquire any grant support for this program?
At the moment, no.
Are you looking into that?
That's the goal.
That seems to me as something that would be out there for a worthwhile program like this is.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you, Dr. Townsend. Yes. Superintendent Holt, I'd like to know, once this work is done and once they've compiled this, how is this going to be used?
So the goal is, I mean, the one thing they didn't mention is that one of the teams is going to the National Secondary Redesign Conference, which is occurring, I want to say it's week after next, or this week?
This week.
Tomorrow, okay. In San Diego. So there is a national effort right now to redesign our secondary schools because we recognize as a field that we have not focused on the college and career pathways as much as we should. So this organization has really come together. So they're going to be surrounded by people who are doing the exact same thing or have already done this. The next step, they're going to come back and present in March. And then April, the expectation is that they have a recommendation to us here at the board of what are our next steps and how do we want secondary schools to look. Once that decision is made, then we have to backwards map how we're going to implement these various college and career pathway-type programs or models all the way back to Kinder. Because college and career readiness and the workforce development does not start at high school. But secondary is where we start the process of thinking about it, and then we have to backwards map and look at, what does this need to look like all the way back to what we're doing in Stottlemyre? Then that's when the bond team gets to come together and say, all right, what do our facilities need to look like in order to accommodate the various models? As you saw on the screen, depending on the model they choose, they have to create an environment that meets the expectations of that model. And so until we know what models we're going for, it kind of, like, a lot of the work that we're doing goes on the outside. So Tony's looking at parking lots, he's looking at easements, he's looking at those pieces. Because once they come up with the model, then he'll start to look at, what do our schools need to look like? How big do the classrooms need to be? What is the equipment that needs to be in there? The furniture, the seating, the various, the ebb and flow of traffic. All of these different pieces fit into Secondary Redesign. The great piece is that this is a project that is done over time. An even better piece is that it's being led by our teachers. So there's no question about how the decisions are being made because they're being made by the people who are closest to the kids.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Question?
Dr. Weaver?
Could it be appropriate this time to ask the superintendent, how many people are going on this trip to San Diego? And what's the approximate cost?
I'll turn that over to Dr. Townsend, I don't remember what the last number was.
Yeah, we have about, from Ross, 13 people going on our trip. All of our co-chairs, excuse me, all of our secondary principals and chairs of each team have an opportunity to travel and see what the best practices are in California. We're looking at roughly under thirty thousand dollars between flight, room board, and per diem. Pardon?
And conference attendance.
Yeah, and conference attendance.
Thank you.
Yes.
Dr. Townsend, we do have 16. When you include just the three central office personnel accompanying your teacher and administrators, which is myself, Dr. Townsend, and Seth Wenzel, who is leading our STEM STEAM.
You know, I prefer if you come up to the microphone. This is certainly valuable information for the community to hear as well. I appreciate the clarification, but I'd like everyone to hear it.
No problem. There is 16 individuals going to the national conference. That extends from our administrators from all secondary building, our co-chairs and a representative, meaning a teacher or instructional coach from each building. And then there are three central office personnel accompanying this group, myself, Dr. Townsend, and Seth Wenzel, one of our executive directors. He is also leading the research behind the STEAM and STEM programs that are out there right now.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
This was budgeted for last year.
This was budgeted for?
Uh huh.
Okay. Anything else? Members of the board?
I'll reserve my comments to my recommendations. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Weaver, thank you. And thank you all for that presentation, for being here. Obviously, we're going to be embarking upon a grand journey, and you have to start knowing where you're going to end up. So I know it's important work and appreciate everybody's contribution.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. ... On a real off-topic. Mr. Gidley, this would be a good chance for you to put in a plug for the spring play before you leave. This is important.
We have a commercial.
Pause for this commercial announcement. As the drama director, I'd like to inform the community that we are putting on Footloose as a musical this March 21, 22, 23. Tickets are 10 and 12, students and adults. At John Glenn's Auditorium. Performances are, that's a Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Performances begin at 7:00 PM. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, Mr. President.
Appreciate it, thank you. No further comments. We'll move on to citizens' comments, 232.18. I see that no citizens have filled out a form to speak this evening. Do any citizens wish to speak? Nobody? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda, 233.18. We're here, motion on the consent agenda.
Still moved.
Moved by Mrs. Madell, is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Heinz. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mark Neal, yes. And Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Consent Agenda passes unanimously. Next item on the Agenda, 234.18. Review and approval of business service and finance items. Ms. Witt?
I am requesting the board approval to purchase network infrastructure equipment, which includes internet access control, network firewall, and network electronics, which includes switches and installation services for all eligible Wayne Westland community schools, instructional buildings. This will be funded mostly with E-Rate funding. It's going to allow us to get $300,000 worth of equipment at the cost of the district of only $65,000. E-Rate covers the remaining of the equipment. We would like approval. If approved, this equipment will be charged to the general fund in an amount not to exceed $65,000.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Weaver, is there support?
Support.
Support from Mr. Buckaloo? Discussion?
Question.
Dr. Weaver?
On the technology piece, with high school redesign, all those sorts of things, this will give us the opportunity to penetrate all of our brick and cement walls? And is that what this is for, to...?
This is a portion of the infrastructure and upgrading our internet services. We've been having a lot of problems with internet connection and things like this.
Yes.
So this is an E-Rate allowable technology purchase. I would have to go back to my technology director and ask if this is the full scope. I can't answer that question, but I do know that this was approved to use our E-Rate funding on it, and it is a very needed upgrade to our infrastructure.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Would I be right in assuming that this is in addition to what we're trying to do with our bond money? This is coming out of the general fund, isn't it, our end of it?
That is correct.
Okay. And so we still have a great deal of upgrading to do with the bond?
Correct. We do have a lot of money in the bond application for technology as well, and this is not a part of that.
And I would offer that technology is constantly going out of date. And if we don't constantly renew and upgrade, we're falling behind. And so this probably is about as clever a move as we could make at a time like this.
Comments from other members? I concur, Mr. Buckaloo. We keep talking about the bond, but the bond is off into the future, and kids are going to be at school tomorrow. So we have to have this, so, okay, thank you. There's been a motion, second. Roll call vote?
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Heinz? Wait, oh, there you go. Mr. Neal, yes. Mrs. Walker?
All members voting in favor. The next issue, 235.18, review and approval of board policy items. Dr. Holt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am asking the board to review the policy here from Lusk Albertson regarding professionalism and with board members, employees, anyone associated with the school district. And so I'm presenting this to the board for review and approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Vice President Heinz, supported by Ms. Walker. Is there discussion?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Mr. President, five and seven of this document that we have here, as far as I'm concerned, are tantamount to censorship. I can understand that if an employee has a rough night and comes into work still drunk the next day, I can understand that there would be repercussions with that. I can also understand that, you know, that we need to treat students and everyone with respect. But when we get into what an employee can do with their social media, I think we're stepping too far. I think that you cannot legislate or censor what a person is going to do with their social media outside of school hours. So I would ask that five and seven be removed from this or else I would not be able to vote in favor of it. It's a shaky road, and I would expect lawsuits over that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Well, there's been a motion, and it's been seconded, and the floor's been open for discussion. So do other members of the board wish to deliberate?
I have a question. When he's numbering, are we numbering the bullet points? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, yes. Five and seven on the bullet points.
Okay.
Is it correct, in my understanding, that all of policies go through our attorneys first before they are brought to us?
This did come from Lusk Albertson, yes.
Okay, so if our attorneys say that there's no legal ramifications, then we should probably go with the recommendation of the attorney, correct?
Well, that's been our policy. And in addition to that, this is a board policy item. If I'm not mistaken, this is a school district policy now. And, correct, please correct me if I'm wrong.
It's not a policy now. When the policy manual was created, the professionalism policy was removed.
Is this the school district's policy?
Yes, this is the school district policy recommended by Lusk Albertson. The first time the policy document was created, this policy was removed. And now I'm asking us to put this policy back as Lusk Albertson. No one seems to know why or how it got removed.
Well, just for the record, I'd like to read the two bullet points that Dr. Weaver is referring to. The first, and Dr. Weaver, if this is not the bullet point you're referring to, please correct me. To not misuse their position or authority in a manner that discredits or embarrasses the school district or fellow employees. This is number five. Number seven is...
No, no. Number five is always communicate.
Okay. Always communicate with students, parents, colleagues, and community members in a professional and appropriate manner. This includes verbal and written communication and the publishing or posting of information on social media platforms, whether such platforms are intended for work, use, or private use. And the seventh, ensure they do not openly disrespect fellow colleagues in team meetings, committees, school and social events through digital and/or social networks and while in communication with students, parents, visitors, and other employees. So those are the two issues. Mr. Buckaloo?
Dr. Holt, am I right in assuming that this whole document, this whole piece here, 4,000.02, has some current or past history as a part of administrative guidelines?
Yes.
And you'd have to assume that if Lusk and Albertson has determined that this is policy that we should adopt, that it, as Mrs. Walker states, passes the legal test. Moreover, I don't know that I agree because we are an employer. And as an employer, we have the right to require our employees to conduct themselves a certain way and to not be in contrast with our mission. And I'm not saying there couldn't be a legal challenge because, as you know, in the United States, there can always be a legal challenge about anything. the United States, there can always be a legal challenge about anything, but to always communicate with students, parents, colleagues, and community members in a professional and appropriate manner, that passes the test for me. This includes verbal and written communication, and the publishing or posting of information on social media platforms. I think what it's saying is that board policy should require people that are here to fulfill the mission that's clearly stated on the back wall, signed by every member of the Board of Education, and to do otherwise would, would be in the face of that. I understand, I understand your concern, but if your concern, Dr. Weaver, is based upon the legal challenge, it's passed the legal test-
My, my concern is that you cannot dictate what people do on their own time.
Mr. President?
In social media only.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Weaver. Mrs. Walker?
Um, I know that we all have seen in the news where people have lost their jobs because of things that they have posted on social media. So we live in a time that is different from other times, and, um, when you have a job, you know what your expectations of that job is, and if you choose to do something that's against the mission or vision of a job, um, then you have put your j- job in jeopardy. Clearly, it didn't mean that much to you. And so I have seen tons of people who have lost their job because of something they posted. And so we just have to be mindful, I mean, because, I mean, point in case, we're living in a time where we have, uh, where people are racially sensitive, so if you're working in a certain position where you're around kids, hospitals, and you're posting things that might be racially or sexually sensitive on your, uh, on your web, what does that say about you and your character? And you're supposed to be helping everyone. So those are the reasons why we have these policies in place.
And, and, and in addition, we're speaking tonight about our role as an employer, but that is not the focus of our role. The focus of our role is students. So I, I know that what you're saying is correct, Dr. Weaver, you cannot censor somebody if they wanna say something. However, there are ramifications for behavior, and if those ramifications cause any of our students to miss an hour's worth of classroom instruction, or detract from our mission at all, it's, it's not worth it. And further, I would rather defend this position in court than the freedom of speech position that a teacher would have to place something on social media, knowing that it's going to be viewed by every kid in the school district, and it falls and goes against our mission. Well, that's, that's my, uh, I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate the open debate. Is there further comments on this issue?
I have a question. Uh, are we still requiring the employees to sign the document about social media use and computer usage?
Acceptable use policy?
Yeah, that's it.
My understanding is that is still part of our employee packet?
Yeah, okay.
The answer is yes.
All right, is, is that information detailed? It's, it's been a long time since I had to sign that one. I don't remember what was on it, but is that part of the, the, acceptable use policy?
Mr., I'm sorry, I'm sorry very much. I, I do have another comment.
Sure, okay. Dr. Holt, are you gonna speak?
Yes, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what it was, 'cause I just signed it and kept on going, but I can definitely look at it and ensure that once we, if we decide as a, uh, if the board decides to adopt this, then it would become, uh, part of that.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes, uh, I guess my question is, who decides when an employee has crossed the line? And, uh, there are no lines here. Uh, for example, if, um, an employee said, "I don't like this," or "I don't like this person," or even shaded that way, can they be disciplined? This, this is not, as far as I'm concerned, on the social media end, this has not been thought through, and I'm not a lawyer, and I do appreciate Lusk and Albertson, um, but, um, now who arbitrarily decides when an employee has been disrespectful? I mean, I'm sorry, but I can't vote for it.
I, I appreciate and respect that, Dr. Weaver, and I guess my only comment would be, why is the employee even on that street? You know, that, that just isn't a street that is in keeping with the mission of our school district. If there's going to be challenges, or there's going to be unhappiness with administrators or with coworkers or something, we have systems to deal with that more effectively than social media. So it, I, I'm, I'm going to support it, and, uh, is there any other discussion on, Ms. Buckaloo?
Yeah, um, a question and a comment. Adopting this policy is, am I correct, it will not change how we operate today?
That's my understanding, it will not change.
Just simply putting in words we're already doing. And, and perhaps to the question of who, who decides, we might fall back on the old definition of pornography. We know it when we see it.
Well, thank you, Ms. Buckaloo. Other comments? Mr. Neal?
Um, I agree with, uh, Mrs. Walker's comments about the, the legal aspect of it, in that, in fact, I believe that our, our employees may be liable legally whether this language was in here or not. The idea that we're putting it here certainly would give them a better understanding, a clearer warning, if you will, that this kind of activity, uh, posting certain things about your employer, or your boss, or whatever it might be, or, or the workplace on, uh, social media, may not be legally, uh, advisable.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Other comments? There's been a motion, it's been seconded, roll call vote.
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
No.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Now, for clarification, we just voted on A at that point, right?
That's right, we voted on A, and all members voted in the affirmative, with the exception, Dr. Weaver.
Yes, yes, six, yes, one, no.
Dr. Holt?
So the next item is, uh, B, which is four thousand point zero-three, conditions of employment. This was the recommended language from Lusk Albertson regarding the addition of the legalization of marijuana, and so that, it, this policy now includes marijuana as one of the drugs that, um, folks are not allowed to be under the influence of when, in employment, uh, with Wayne Westland Community Schools.
Thank you. Uh, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Walker, support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Heinz. Is there discussion on this issue?
I was gonna say-
Ms. Madell?
I thought we had something in place already, uh, after medical marijuana went into place.
Yes, ma'am, oh, I'm sorry.
Dr. Holt?
Okay. Uh, yes, ma'am, that is correct, but now that it was legalized, the policy had to be changed, because it's now, it, marijuana fell under illegal drugs before, now it falls under legal drugs like alcohol.
Okay.
Further discussion? Mr. Neal?
Uh, yes, there's a phrase contained in B that I think is supposed to cover, uh, maybe the marijuana, except that I don't think it's clear enough. It says, "Similarly, an employee or volunteer who is found to have been present in the workplace while under the influence of illegal drugs, prescription drugs for which the employee does not have a current valid prescription, or alcohol, will be subject to discipline up to and including discharge from employment." I don't find that, in my opinion at least, reading that, I don't see where marijuana fits, even though the attorneys say that it does, I can't see it within that phrase.
I, I must admit, I felt exactly the way you did, until the superintendent just put her pen on the paragraph that says, "Notwithstanding state permissibility, the use and possession of marijuana and marijuana-induced intoxication are prohibited on school grounds," and it is that section that's been added.
Oh, okay, separate paragraph, okay, very good.
And there, and there's the reason why Dr. Holt is sitting right there.
Yeah.
So, there's, uh, been a motion and seconded. Uh, is there any further discussion on this issue? Roll call vote?
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mark Neal, yes. Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, unanimous vote. Item, uh, number two-three-six-point-one-eight, one-eight, is the M A S B Board of Director election for Region Eight. Uh, this is a, uh, an election that we, each member of the board has received a packet, uh, containing the different candidates, their qualifications and background, and, uh, we, we have the opportunity to vote for one, and only one, and, uh, the chair recognizes Mrs. Walker.
Thank you, um, uh, President Cox. Um, just so you all know, that, um, I serve on the, uh, M A S B Board of Directors, but I represent Group Six, which is based on district size, but we also are in a region that's based on region size, and it's Macomb, ISA, uh, Oakland, Oakland, and, um, Wayne. And so the position for this seat, uh, was, was previously was Brenda Carter, and she was of Pontiac Schools, and she just got elected to s- be a state rep. So it's an open seat. Um, there's a lot of people that's running for this seat. My recommendation to the board, after looking through, um, I actually have two, and I'm, I'm good with either or, and if it coincides with some of the things that you guys saw, um, Ms. Burgett McQuiston on fourteen, and, um, Dr. Darlene Pompenio-
Pomponio.
Pomponio on fifteen. I have, uh, I actually served on the Wakospa Board with Darlene, um, and I've also, uh, had a lot of interactions with, at, at M A S B with, uh, Ms. Burgett. So I'm fine with any of, I'm fine with anybody in the book, but those are two that I know, uh, personally, and would recommend, so. We only need one, though, so I don't, I'm just putting that out there to vote, whatever your research was when you did your reading.
Thank you. Mr. Buckaloo?
Uh, I can see, Mrs. Walker, why you would choose those two. I went through all of the candidates for all of the regions, and these two are head and shoulders above anybody else who was a candidate in any other region. Uh, I have a, a preference for Dr. Pomponio for a couple of reasons. First is, I know her, she shows up, and, uh, I don't think that I have that kind of a relationship with, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. McQuiston. Uh, second, of all of the candidates, it's my understanding that only Dr. Pomponio has the president's award from our organization, M A S B, which to me is rather, uh, important. She also seems to be the longest-serving, uh, board member available, so I would, I would lean, uh, towards Dr. Pomponio.
Other discussion, members of the board?
Are you looking for a motion?
I, yes, I am.
Okay, I'd like to move that we support Dr. Pomponio for Region Eight.
Support.
Support by, a motion by Mrs. Madell, support by Mrs. Walker. Is there discussion on this? Roll call vote?
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Uh, just a matter of clarification, on Dr. Pomponio for Region Eight, I don't know, thank you.
Yes.
And Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
The record reflect unanimous support for Dr. Pomponio. Good luck, Dr. Pomponio, if you are successful. Next item on the agenda, two-three-seven-point-one-eight, is the Head Start Monthly Report, Mrs. Madell.
And I apologize that you do not have a statement for November, December, and now January.
Motion to relieve Mrs. Madell of her guilt?
I'm not in charge of this, I just reported out.
We will look, we will look forward to this, uh, the next meeting, and we'll move on to two-three-eight-point-one-eight, the superintendent's report, Dr. Holt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, a couple of things I wanted to remind us about, just, uh, on a happier note, we are about to enter into kindergarten roundup, and so this is a very exciting time of year. Uh, we have our new flyer out, which we're very proud of. Mr. Appleby, and, uh, who's our graphic designer, really put a lot of thought into this, and seeing all of our kids, uh, represented here, and believe it or not, I believe this is a class of twenty thirty-two. Twenty thirty-two, wow, imagine that, that, uh, the, so, uh, kindergarten roundup is March fifteenth at 1:00 PM at all of our local elementary schools. Uh, did I get that right? March fifteenth at 1:00 PM, right? Okay, just making sure I have it right. Uh, so please make sure you bring your kiddos out for an amazing day with their principals, their teachers, other students. It really is a great opportunity, and, um, having a first grader myself who didn't get to go through kindergarten roundup, he was very perturbed that we came after kindergarten roundup, and, uh, but he really enjoyed it, uh, last year. The kids really get a, a great step of being acclimated, and just know that while we're very excited about our kinders coming, we here in Wayne Westland recognize that coming to kindergarten, while it's exciting for many of us, it's also very scary, it's very frightful, and for some kids, it's flat-out traumatizing. The reason we do kindergarten roundup, one, of course, is to get, uh, an idea of which students are coming, but we also want to lessen that stress on our children and our families, to let them know that they can send their babies to us, we will take care of them, and so kindergarten roundup, March fifteenth at 1:00. I also want to continue to, um, encourage people to get involved. There is a, there are a lot of folks that are very interested in what's happening in Wayne Westland, and it's one thing to talk about it, it's another thing to be about it. And so we are asking folks to come and get and stay involved. You can get involved with something as simple as just coming to a school site, um, once a month, once a week, once a year, uh, to be a watchdog dad, or a literacy corps member. You can also, of course, get involved in our action teams, our committees, and really, uh, we're really trying to give the voice of the work that needs to be done back to the people that are closest to it. And if you, uh, see here, we, uh, this is available right outside the, uh, office here, but it's also available in our front offices and online. This is the meeting schedule of all the upcoming action teams, and if there is an area that you're interested for, and, for example, we've revitalized, uh, and realized that our student discipline team also included safety and security, and there may be a need to shift those two, just because there's a lot of work being done in both, so we may have a safety and security, and then a student discipline for some time, so we're really looking at getting the voices involved. So if there's something you're interested in, come on up. One that I can tell you is definitely coming up is visual and performing arts. We are looking at what is going to be our five-year trajectory with that. Most recently in the district, we've had a lot of great things going on. Uh, we have a weekly publication called This Week in Wayne Westland, which goes out to all of our staff, really does kind of, it's kind of everything in the kitchen sink, uh, in there, and so I'm happy to report that we do have more readership of this, um, document and articles within, uh, Wayne Westland. Uh, it's no secret, I'm a fa- a firm believer in that leaders are readers. We have to read to lead, whether that's leading a classroom, whether that's leading a bus, whether that's leading a school, or even myself leading a district. We have to stay abreast on what's happening in the educational community, and this is a lot of the impetus for, particularly my posts on Facebook, is most, mostly to get us involved in what's happening in the conversational realm, it, here in, not only in Wayne Westland, but also in the nation, state and the nation. There are going to be folks that, quite honestly, are, we call them race baiters. There are people who will take certain posts and decide, because it has to do with black people, or because it has to do with something else, that they are going to try to racebait our community. I am asking our community not to fall for the okey-dokey. Do not fall for it. I post about funding, I post about inequities, I post about great things, I really am just putting things out there for us to become a reading community, and I encourage you to read things other than just what's on Facebook. Read, uh, there are many educational journals, believe it or not, if you want to know five, we can definitely give them to you. If you would like to get other articles, feel free to let us know. We will share, but we are becoming a reading organization because we need to know what's happening on a larger political, socio-emotional, um, just a larger context versus just what's happening in our community. So we have, uh, publications like The Marketplace, and I have to say thank you to Don Nicholson for coming to our Leadership Council and sharing with all of the leaders in the district what the great resources are available in The Marketplace, and he did let us know that, um, to answer your question, the pieces he posts for free are events in the community. So there's a whole section where if you're trying to get the community out to an event or a club or activity, he'll post that for free, but if, like, when we post in kindergarten roundup, we do pay for these ads. So we do not want to take advantage of our partners, 'cause we do appreciate them, so we're not opposed to paying, but just so everyone knows, that, uh, Mr. Nicholson has been amazing, and, uh, we want to celebrate that he is now up to 10,000 readers in just five short years with The Marketplace Magazine. So thank you to Don for that. In that same Leadership Council, we did talk about expectations here in Wayne Westland, and we used two, um, uh, I guess, schools of thought, would be the best way to put it. Um, one is, of course, the board policy, we needed to have that, but also looking at a book called The Four Agreements by Don Miguel- Don Miguel- But also, looking at a book called The Four Agreements by Don Miguel Ruiz. And what he did is he took ancient Toltec wisdom and really poured it into us right here in 2018. It was literally like bringing our ancestors forward. And we did talk about that as a leadership team. The four agreements are, quite honestly, be impeccable with your word. Do not take anything personal, it's not about you. Don't make assumptions, and always do your best. It is my contention that if we, as a school district, do these four things consistently, be impeccable with your word, do not take anything personal, do not make assumptions, and always do your best, recognizing that your best is different depending on your personal circumstances at the time. Some days, we might be better than others. We also talked about the stages of change as an organization. We are, right now, a storming organization, and that is a beautiful place to be. We're still between forming and storming. Some of our departments are moving into a bit more norming. I have to commend Mrs. Jill Simmons and her department. They are really norming as a group, and it's beautiful to see. And it gives all the, all the rest of us something to look forward to as that group starts to come together. Doesn't mean that they don't have struggles, but it just means that we are storming. And so, we talked as a leadership group about what do leadership moves look like during the storm? And what do leadership moves not look like during the storm? What are we to do and what are we not to do? So, that was amazing to see that go, that conversation happen. We are also in the middle of interest-based bargaining as an organization. So, we have five of our bargaining units that are using the interest-based bargaining model with the facilitators, four that are not. Is it five and four? Make sure I'm saying it right. Three, five and three. Five and three that are not using the actual facilitators, but are using the spirit of the interest-based model, because we did allow all of the groups to be trained in the interest-based bargaining model. And we are very excited, because we get feedback every single session as a whole about what, not exactly what they talked about, but we get to know that conversations are happening and they're moving forward. I want to give a huge thank you to our mayors, senators, council members, state board members, and so many others as we transition new politicians into our community. They have been amazing in sitting down with us and really wanting to understand the challenges, trials, tribulations, and successes, wonderful things that are, and celebrations that are happening here in Wayne Westland. So, I have to thank them and our partners at Wayne Risa and at the City Council for their, their support as well. Finally, I want to comment on the fact that we have several of our schools that are decreasing in their discipline. So, congratulations to them. Our schools are really working hard. And last thing I want to comment on is I did receive a couple of letters regarding a comment that was made. And yes, it was very hurtful. Please know that I will not be poked with any sticks whatsoever. And I apologize to you, my husband, for having to be here and hear that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Holt. We'll move on to two three nine point one eight, citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Any citizens wishing to address the board? If you ask, please come up to the lectern. We'll give you three minutes. And is there anybody that'd like to address the Board of Education tonight? Seeing none, we'll, we'll move on to, let's see, where are we going to move on to? Okay, review and recommendations, the Board of Education, two four zero point one eight. Mr. Buckaloo?
Thank you. Always good to go first. So, last Friday, I believe every member of the board was able to attend at least some part of the M A S A, M A S B Joint Conference at the Ren Center down in Detroit. And that was kind of neat. There was always something, well, there was something there for everyone, I'm sure of that. And, and it was quite enjoyable to, to talk with people from various school boards around the state. And prior to that, about two weeks ago, Mr. Neal, Ms. Madell, and I were able to attend the School Law and Finance Seminar at, at School Craft College. And there, we were able to listen to a number of presenters. One of them happened to be the president of the State Board of Education, who began with a lament about the lame duck session in Congress and all of the ill that it had done, including the A to F scoring system for school districts. And one thing struck me as so indicative of the lame duck session, these bills that go through the legislature so quickly that people don't have an opportunity to take a look at what it is they're voting on, what it is they're passing. The lady who was president of the State Board of Education said to us that she didn't think that, that we would be able to get the testing in place, get it evaluated, get it assessed, and get it back in time for the academic portion of the A to F evaluation to take place. How are we supposed to comply with state law when reality is they don't give the people in charge of conducting those kinds of, of activities ample time, ample direction? It's consistent with the sign of nonsense that we see year after year from our state legislature. Hopefully, hopefully, in this term, we'll see some differences made. We'll see some decisions coming out of Lansing that will affect public education in a positive, appropriate way. And one other thing, and a little story, please. I was at a social event with some friends and some acquaintances, some I knew better than others. One of the latter group, one of the acquaintances came up to me and he said something to the effect of, have you got that school board, excuse me, that school district in line? Have you finally got them squared away? And are they now moving in the right direction? I don't remember exactly what I said. I know I was polite. And I know that it was an inadequate answer. And I've been thinking about it on and off for almost two weeks now. And had that person been here tonight, I might have gone up to him and said, look, here's really what a board member does. He has one vote and he exercises it. And that's about, that's the biggest thing, I guess, maybe, that we do in terms of power. Our role is, in many cases, simply ceremonial. We had a wonderful time standing and having our pictures taken with the three young ladies today. Even more enjoyable than that, the time in June when we hand out diplomas. That's a wonderful ceremonial event. We do that, and we do other things throughout the school year. Another thing that we do is we're cheerleaders for the school district. This is a great place. Part of our job as a board is to say to people who might not really understand just what a great place this is, hey, come look at what we're doing here. So, we do that. Maybe the biggest role we have is, is a policy setting. And our organization, M A S B, tells us we should take a view from ten thousand feet. We should look down from afar and set our policies and then just kind of go away, like the old watchmaker theory. And in a lesser sense, we have a policy of oversight. We need to kind of keep an eye on dollars and cents and thises and thatses. So, we have all of those roles, but we only have one employee, just one. Our superintendent is responsible to the board. None of the people you see here, whether they be administrators or teaching staff or custodians or anyone else, has any responsibility to us. They don't work for us, and we don't order them around. That's not our role. We don't direct any employee except for our superintendent. When it comes to dealing with people in charge of making decisions, we might all have our opinions. And we might be tempted from time to time to kind of force our opinions on a group. We shouldn't do that. We should step back and realize that those decisions need to be made by the people with the expertise to make those kinds of decisions. And stay the heck away from decisions that we really don't have the skills to involve our self-will. So, had that person been here today, he'd have had about seventy-five cents worth of my mind. But he's not here, so unfortunately, you folks had to hear it. I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, I just wanted to make comment about a little differently than what Mr. Buckaloo did. This board does have the opportunity to oversee a lot of things. And one of those is the budget that we adopt and we also manage. I would ask that in future, in light of this trip that I didn't know about, I would ask that there be some kind of line-by-line study before the next budget is rolled out, so that we can see what's happening and approve it. I just think that two or three could have been sent and reported back to everyone else. Or perhaps that it would have been cheaper for us to bring facilitators here to the district. We have to remember that these monies being spent were borne on the backs of our employees who have been, who have been on a freeze for at least three years. And also, just a last point. I would just like to say that we need to look up the word euphemism and bring that into our vocabulary. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Mrs. Hines?
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank the pledge kids, they did a wonderful job. And I like the change, like you said, to have them come up. Because when I was in high school and I got my diploma, I thought it'd be cool to be a board member. And now, I'm a board member to this day. So, that might have a lasting impact on these children. They actually sit at the board seat for them to tell their friends, hey, I got to sit in the board seat. So, that was wonderful. I was also able to go to the M S A B conference this weekend. I took a security, a school security, a safety security class. That was phenomenal. I really would like to be on that committee, because like, the things that we learned was just awesome. And then just having the bond money to be able to make these things happen is just fantastic. And I was able to take a team building class as well, to really learn how to work with different personalities, to make everything mesh well. And recently, Dr. Holt, I've been out in the community, really getting to know different groups, organizations, nonprofits, different mentoring groups, different ways to help our children. Because, you know, we are the community. And one thing I love about Dr. Holt is she brings the love back in Wayne Westland. I mean, this is the first time I've ever seen us really working with a lot of different organizations to do sponsorships. And, you know, I'm really excited with my organization to see if they can sponsor the school district as well. So, you're doing a wonderful job, definitely appreciate that. And I'm pretty excited on Wednesday, February the thirteenth, they're having the Champions of Wayne banquet. And I was able to get Andrew Humphrey to be one of our surprise speakers.
Well, you gotta surprise me more.
And this is the reason why, because he had, like, I was really impressed when he's at the City of Westland saying, I mean, maybe he's coming. It's the fact that he has, like, like you guys are doing a different pathway. There's different type of careers that children need to know about, like meteorology, you know, the NASA, all kind of wonderful things. And like his story that he told at the City of Westland, the M L K Day, was very inspirational. So, I'm very excited to be able to bring those type of opportunities to our children, so they can ask questions and say, hey, you know, one thing that he said that my dad always tells me in life, that you have your needs and your wants. You might want to be a football player, but you need to do something that's going to bring a paycheck. So, I mean, that was pretty inspirational. And, oh, and one more thing, too, I'm really excited. I was able to be nominated for the African-American Leadership Awards. It's going to be February twenty-second at the Charles H. Wright Museum. So, like, really working in the community, bringing people together is like, this is fabulous. So, we will have some information if you guys would like to attend that as well. And I'm done.
Congratulations, Mrs. Hines, well deserved. Very good. Good job. Mrs. Madell?
Hello.
Hello.
I'd like to piggyback on something that Mr. Buckaloo said earlier. A good friend of Wayne Westland passed away last month. And he was a teacher, a mentor, principal in our school district. And his wife was just as involved with the secretaries. And he will be sorely missed. But again, I heard people coming up, from people coming up to me and saying, what's going on in Wayne Westland? We're hearing some negative things being said and on and on. And I'm going, what you're doing right now is the right thing to do. Come and ask me, and I will tell you exactly what's going on in Wayne Westland. But to take it to social media or to spread rumors in the community doesn't do this district any good at all. It's very destructive, it's deceitful. And if you have a question about anything that goes on in this district, pick up a phone and call central office here. Call one of us. Don't call your neighbor and friend. Call us, and we'll make sure that you get to the right person who can give you accurate information. But the spreading of the rumor stuff has got to stop. This is, this is silly. All it does is hurt our students in the end. But I'm sure Mr. Buckaloo is hearing the same thing also. We got a chance this morning to drink a lot of coffee with our legislators in Westland. And then I went on to Inkster and got a chance to, again, advocate for our school district. Tomorrow night will be the State of the State address from our new governor. And they will be sitting down as legislators after that and looking at their plans going forward as to how to accomplish what she has set up for them. And I know that education will be coming from her lips. And again, we reminded our legislators that we're sitting here and our students need their help. That they also need anything that they can pass on to us in the way of additional financing, because we are all hurting. For some reason, the, the big report, the big study, you know, adequacy study is not being enacted fast enough. And we need people to understand that we are horribly underfunded. Mrs. Walker and I got a chance to go to the Spelling Bee last week and meet with a whole bunch of really excited students. And in the end, we ended up with our two winners, who will go on to the Charles H. Wright Museum in March for the Scripps Spelling Bee there for other winners in the county to compete, where I usually go and feel horribly inadequate when it comes to having a major college education and some of the words I've never even heard of, and expect to spell them is another thing. I'm a little disappointed, though, that it's going to be held on a Sunday. I work on Sunday mornings, and I don't think they asked me if I was available. But, you know, I'll do my best at getting there as quickly as I can after Sunday service. Our spring plays, thank you for indulging me with Mr. Gidley, because, again, this is, this is one of our treasures that we offer our students and our community in the form of theater. And they are doing Footloose, and Wayne High is doing Sister Act. So, this is the spring musical that's family-friendly. So, please come out and join all of us for the hard work and dedication that our students put into these performances. Before I came here today, I was on social media, and I got a chance to thank Jenny Johnson. Somebody in the community put out that we're closed tomorrow, and to spread the word. Yeah, I was real happy about that. And luckily, I scrolled down a little bit to see where Jenny Johnson had put down there, going, that decision has not been made. There's school tomorrow. And I, I was very impressed with the flyer that went out from our principals to all the parents, explaining the process and explaining the criteria. That was a well-written piece out to the parents, because it informed. And hopefully, we won't have another day, but, you know, this is Michigan. You know, have fun with your kidlets if we are home. If not, we'll expect to see you with your bright, smiley faces at school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Madell. Mr. Neal?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to start off by thanking the Secondary Redesign Team. A great report, tremendous enthusiasm. It's just sort of exciting to listen to them as excited and excited and interested in that project as I've heard them be, because it makes us feel better as well. Also, to reflect the comments about the attendance at the conference this weekend, I knew as a new board person that there would be a lot to learn. But I really didn't- but I really didn't understand how much. The classes there are phenomenal. I really did enjoy them, and it, it makes you want to learn more. There is a certain number of classes that I must attend in order to finish my core competency, if you will. Uh, I don't know that I'll be competent when I finish that, but I'll continue to take other classes as well. Uh, it was very enjoyable, and I, and very much appreciated, uh, being able to talk with the other board members at that meeting as well. And then lastly, I'd like to say, Dr. Holt, I thank you very much for the great work that you do. Uh, I've been able to observe you in this very short time and very, very happy with your enthusiasm, your dedication, and everything that you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Mrs. Walker?
Um, first of all, I just want to say, um, congratulations to, uh, Dr. Holt and her team with the, uh, school's closed video. To be a board member and to be sitting in my living room and watching Inside Edition and to see you guys on a national level just warmed my heart. And also, you represented us very well when you talked about how our superintendents have to go about closing schools on Channel 4. You did an excellent job. Um, also with that being said, that, that, I just want to reiterate that as board members, we have to do our, uh, due diligence when it comes to our packages and information that we're given. We're giving it enough time to where we can look it over if we don't understand something, because you might not always understand something, to ask the question. We can't get up and act like we are doing things in a cloak of darkness. When it comes to that budget, I have an MBA, and sometimes I still don't understand the budget. So if there's something there that you can't see or don't understand, call the people in the department, they're, that's what they're there for. They're there to help us to make an informed decision. That's what their job is. That's why we put them in the positions, because we trust them to do their job. So it's on us to make sure that we do our homework when we have these packages so that we can make a decision, so that we don't get up here and look like, oh, I didn't know something or I didn't do something. You just have to, you just have to do the homework. And that's my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Thanks, uh, thank you, everyone, for coming and sitting through our meeting. Uh, I would like to thank the, uh, the kids, uh, Aleah Nosinger, Hannah Nosinger, their older sister was here, uh, also tonight, and Madeline Sartor and their families and, uh, the principal and the teachers from the school. Uh, they did a great job, and yes, they look very comfortable sitting in these chairs. Uh, I also went to the M A S B conference over the weekend and, uh, sat at lunch, and I looked across the table and I saw the fellow, and he looked so familiar to me. And the reason he did is because I graduated with him 40-plus years ago. And, uh, to see him on the Board of Education in that same school district was, uh, was really nice. But one of the classes that I attended, uh, and they're all so good. And I, I've been through the, what Mr. Neal called the core competency classes, like everyone here has. Uh, you take something, several things away from each of them. But one of the things that he said is that your board of education should conduct itself the way you want the students to conduct themselves. And boy, I really heard that. And, and, you know, the way that we talk with one another and the way that we deliberate issues. And I'm very happy to have dissent when we're dealing with an issue. I think it's important, not only for us to show that we have questions about issues, but I think the community needs to know, uh, what the argument is and what the perspective is. And all too often, we do so much of our homework that we just come up here and vote. And I wonder if sometimes people wonder where we're getting the information for that. So you saw a lot of discussion tonight about some important issues. And, uh, I, I will continue to remember what they, what they had to say about mirroring what you want the children, uh, to do. Two things that I'd like to bring up, and, uh, I'd like, I'd like the board to bring this up in the future if you find that it has merit, that it's something that should be discussed or talked about. Uh, one of the things is, and it was discussed a little bit tonight, is the VOTEC Center. And, you know, for, for several years, eight years or so, many of the offerings that we have at the VOTEC Center, there simply wasn't a market for those people in, you know, in the, in the world. And now with, uh, there's a resurgence of, uh, construction and brand-new avenues of vocations such as health. I just look at the VOTEC, and I know that, uh, we have a tremendous resource there that I believe can be expanded. I believe that it could, we could support another, uh, you know, what would you, I don't know what you'd call it, another shift, and, and even, even in the evening. And this community supported an enhancement village, supported our bond effort. And I would like to see the school district support the adult community, too. There are many adults that would benefit greatly from the type of resource we have at VOTEC. And that's the discussion that I would like to have in the future if other members of the board feel that that would be advantageous. Uh, additionally, I, I know that, that there is a plan, or there was a plan, uh, regarding Sassafras Trail. And, you know, Sassafras Trail is an area of property that 20-some years ago, the Board of Education elected to sell development rights back to the state of Michigan. Uh, I could tell you the whole story about what happened there and why it happened there. And I believe that the intent, because I was one of the members of the Board of Education at the time, was to bring in some natural education into our school district. Uh, how many of us can even identify what a sugar maple, what a white oak, what a red oak is? And they're all over there. And you can't build on the property, but you could have a nature center over there. In, in any event, I believe that somewhere, ask Tony Spiezey, somewhere. He's got a giant closet full of all the old lamp service. Uh, I believe that there is a document, and it could, it could, it could begin the discussion, at least a discussion on it. And that's, I wanted to put that out there in case the Board of Education agrees with me that we should, we could at least look at it. I know we have a big plate, maybe we get a bigger plate and put that on there. That's all I, that's all I have tonight. Uh, I want to make one comment about, uh, Ms. Hines. I, uh, another congratulations to you. Uh, uh, well, well done. And you brought up Mr. Humph- Mr. Humphrey. You know, he said something during that presentation that I really heard, too. And he, he was talking to his dad, who I'd like to have his dad here. Uh, he said, what do you know and what do you love? And put those things together. And boy, that's, answering that question for, for myself wasn't that easy. I had to think about that for a while, and, uh, it involves ice cream, by the way. Uh, but, uh, I think it was very, I think he'll do a great job at the presentation. And, uh, again, thank you, everybody. Thanks, members of the Board of Education. That concludes my comments. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Madell, support.
Support.
Support by Mrs. Hines. Roll call vote?
No, just, just.
I just want to make sure that Mr. Buckaloo doesn't want to.
There were a couple of things.
Okay, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.